This is the regular meeting of the Ryanbeck Central School District Board of Education. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 25, 2014, 2015 regular meeting?
Second.
Lisa, any changes to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor? That's all except Del Bear, extensions. Del Bear? We have an opportunity for public comment. Would anyone like to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none.
Oh, wait.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm seeing some.
Hi, Cindy from fourth grader and sixth grader. It's my understanding that the school district has a one-year contract with the bus company always east.
That's correct.
And from my understanding, if we were going to look at another company, we'd want to start early, possibly even something like January. So I would just like to request the process begin or committee be formed. I'm not really up on how the process is, but if we could start an exploratory committee or start the process of looking into what would be the best answer for after this full year, whether we continue with this bus company or another one. And I would like it to be a transparent committee, so either apparent on it or I don't know how the committees work, if the meeting minutes could be just posted somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, move on to reports and discussion. We have board committee reports. Let's start with finance. Oh, that was me. I've got to turn the page. Eventually I will find the right page. Four, pick up the first blue.
It's right after the blue.
Okay. There it is, okay. All right, so Tom is still looking into a district credit card to be used for purchases where vendors will not accept purchase orders or checks. We do not currently have a policy on district credit cards, so we did look at a sample policy. We suggested some revisions to that policy. Of course, the policy committee will get a chance to look at that at some point as well. And Tom is going to run the policy by the audit firm and the claims auditor for any input that they may have. We discussed the preliminary 2016-17 budget. Right now, the estimate for the tax levy cap will be as low as .31 percent. We will save a considerable amount of money on TRS this year and ERS as well, I believe, but the current gap is approximately $500,000. We're a bit over budget on special education costs this year. We continue to study transportation-related issues with various scenarios. Joe shared that Senator Serino has indicated that the gap elimination adjustment will be eliminated in the 2016-17 state budget. This may result in approximately $235,000 more in state aid, which would reduce our budget gap to $250,000 approximately. We discussed some possible alternatives to cutting programs and services, like increased use of the fund balance. We do not project a large amount of savings from retirements. The notice of retirement is due February 1st. We will have the rollover budget for the full board on December 22nd, which is our next board meeting. Enrollment numbers continue to decline, so we discussed the possibility of cuts due to declining enrollment. Our next meeting will be on December 17th at noon, and we will be discussing further transportation options as well as use of fund balance. Any questions? Lisa?
I have two questions. The first is just, it wasn't clear to me whether the entire line for special ed costs has already been spent for 2015-16 or just that we're running over where it would be expected to be at this point in the year.
It hasn't exceeded it, but it's run up quite a bit, so it's, there's not much more room. So if more additional students do come in, we will start going over budget in special education.
Do we think that's going to happen?
It depends on who moves in.
Well, no, but right now it doesn't.
But right now, it doesn't seem that way.
Okay. And then my second question is, is it, it's possible that I am remembering something that I didn't actually hear because it would be nice to, but is it correct that if the district wound up having to go to an austerity budget because our budget failed, that that austerity budget would be higher than the current year's budget?
Really, what it means by going to austerity now means that you can't raise your tax levy limit. If you get additional funds from state aid, use additional fund balance, or have other revenue sources, your budget can increase, but two no votes means no increase to the tax levy.
Tax levy. So then, if it was, if the levy cap was .31 percent, that wouldn't matter, or would?
No, it wouldn't matter. I mean, you could have additional sources. I'm hoping someday, for example, that interest rates get back to where they should be, like at 4 percent, so I can budget $400,000 instead of $50,000. Well, that's an additional $350,000 to the budget on the revenue side. So nowadays, in the past, the austerity budget meant your budget couldn't increase greater than the year before. That's not the case now. It now means your tax, you can't raise your tax levy more than what you had the year before.
Okay.
So your budget can increase. It can do anything it wants to do, but your tax levy can't.
You can't source it from tax revenue.
Correct.
Yeah, austerity used to be based on your budget. Now it's based on your tax levy.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
Deidre?
Yeah, so I just thought I'd also kind of amplify the issue about our discussion related to transportation issues since that was asked about. And so we'll discuss the financial implications of a bus contract, whatever bus contract is going to be in place for next year at our December meeting. But I think we've also talked about that administrators, we look to them to make a recommendation, you know, moving forward, but that we do need to have information to create our budget for next year about what the transportation costs are going to be. So as we create our budget, that the bus transportation contract, of course, is crucial to developing that budget. So we're both going to be discussing it in the finance committee in December, reporting out on that as well, like we always do at the next meeting, and looking to our administrators. And I believe it was discussed at the finance meeting that we sort of need a decision in January about what we're doing about our bus contract for next year in order to allow for enough time for us to build the budget properly for next year.
Rick?
It's worth mentioning in terms of transparency that these committee meetings are public meetings, and so if someone were interested, they could come to the meetings and be there and listen to the discussion that goes on.
December 17th at noon.
All right, any other questions or comments for finance? All right, move on to facilities. A good thing as well. So since our last facilities meeting, Sheldon Teeter has reviewed the draft building condition survey with our architects, and they've been working on modifications to that report. Sheldon shared a list of high priority items from the report. The pricing on all of those is an estimate, and they would be the basis for a potential referendum. Nothing on the list represents any code or health and safety issues. He feels that some of the costs may not be accurate, and he'll work with the architect to get more accurate pricing and more detailed scope of work so that more detailed prices can be determined. He then went over the list and all the individual items. I think there were probably 30 or 40 different items on the list. We're going to be having our next meeting on December 18th at 9:00, and we will have representatives from the architectural firm with us to kind of review the report, and we can ask any questions. Any questions? Laura?
I'm just curious about whether or not the committee has considered looking, taking a more holistic look at our buildings beyond what the building condition survey is telling us, because clearly we'd have to go out for a referendum. So in that case, would we consider, you know, sort of projecting into the future how we want our buildings to perform, how we want? You know, I don't even know what's in the offing. I've never been on facilities. But are we just sticking to the list of items, or are we trying to think sort of into the future a little bit more?
I can address that. Okay, so the list that we reviewed at the last meeting was a list that Sheldon generated based on information in the building condition survey and also based on his own knowledge of the physical plant, which is extensive and much more thorough than the architects have at this point. And we have, it's fair to say, a broad range, both in terms of work and also in terms of projected cost for potential work that could be the subject of a referendum. And if we wanted to, if we wanted to, we could do work on our physical plant that would result in a seven or eight-figure referendum. We are not looking in that direction now for a whole host of reasons. What we're thinking at the moment is to do a small capital project, you know, small as these things go, to try to focus on the things that really have to be done. And, you know, in terms of the future, these are a combination of things that have to be done because, like, the roof is coming to the end of its life, so that has to be done the next few years, and then things that, while the buildings won't fall down if we don't do them, they will enhance the experience of the students and the people who work in the buildings if we do do them, more than just, oh, it would be nice to have this. So that's sort of the scope that we're looking at now. That's not to say that we couldn't, if the community had the desire for us to do so, look at something broader. But of course, you have to lay that alongside other considerations, not just fiscal considerations, but also the fact, again, we're faced with the declining enrollment issue, and it becomes progressively more difficult to justify making extensive changes that aren't really necessary but are maybe desirable in that sort of a climate. It's not to say that it shouldn't happen or couldn't happen, just that the way that we've been looking at it has been to try to address the things that really need to be done and not make this a large capital project. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. School start time?
We don't actually have minutes for school start. I just, it's probably a good time if the board has any comments or questions from the presentation.
Thanks so much for doing it. It's so awkward now that we all have to, like, be, it's a weird setup. Thanks for doing all that work. And I do, I do have a couple of questions. I really do appreciate the thoroughness of the presentation. It was really great. I personally need to, like, absorb some of the information more, and I know like everybody else does, but I'll just, so one question I, so was the reducing, what, the passing time, you call the time between periods, to three minutes, was that a recent, presumably, I'm just, was that a part of any kind of survey question or not?
No, we haven't surveyed anyone other than, I think Joe spoke with, you know, administrators in the building, the building principals, but...
And students haven't?
No, they haven't been surveyed about that.
We were looking at other schools and what their time. Does it seem like reasonable?
Like, three and four are the usual.
Three and four are the usual.
Right. Do, did you get a sense, I mean, was there, there was like a feel, was there a field for just comments generally?
Yes, we've got a lot to process.
So you were just, I was just curious if there's any sort of sense of why BMS students had a higher percentage of concerns around it negatively affecting them, or if you haven't had a chance to go through it yet?
I can, I can tell you, a lot of them had questions about sports, and I want to go outside and play after school, and I'm not going to have any time for that if I have to be in school a half an hour longer. It was really sort of along those lines. I like my time after school, don't mess with it.
I see, okay.
But not, not so much about their health and wellness, and needing it or not.
And then, I know other people have questions, but, okay, oh yeah, so I will just say again, like, I'm concerned, I know everyone is, but I just, just put it out there, that the buses, like, we'd need to, you know, any change to what our bus schedule is, I think it just...
Background to that is, we would certainly need our buses to be functioning.
Rock solid, rock solid.
Exactly. And on the bus topic, because it came up in a couple, or at least one of the comments, I'm wondering, I'm just wondering, as an additional, I think that there might be, so let's say, and again, I have a lot to think about, but if Chancellor started at, if we moved it 30 minutes up, Chancellor would start at nine...
9:02.
9:02, right. But like, the last bus stop, I wonder if information presented to parents who might think, oh, so I have to drop my kid off at 9 o'clock, but in fact, you know, there's, every bus, what's the last time a bus picks up a kid, right, is when you'd have to be, is the time you'd have to be available, right? Is when your kid would most be...
Right, when your kid is picked up.
Which would be, you know, 8:50, 8:45, or whatever. So I think that just, something in our calculation that hit me is, you know, if your bus is 8:30, the bus might be 8:40.
Right.
And in some ways, just that kind of variety is certainly possible year to year anyway, because bus schedules change. So a kind of, you know, clarity, if we were to go down that route, about what that means for bus pickups and parents who work would be, I think, something we might want to communicate if we were to go down that road.
Lisa?
I also want to thank you guys for really informative and thorough presentation. I thought it was terrific. I have to say that I was very surprised, positively surprised, by the relatively low increased cost of the flip-flop, because, as you know, in the public discussions that we've had to date, it has, at least anecdotally, sounded as though the only cost-neutral change that we were likely to be able to make was the shift, and everything else, at least it sounded to me as though everything else was going to cost a lot more money. Well, $30,000 is more money, to be sure, but compared to how much more it would cost to do, you know, the, everybody starts the same time option, it's not an overwhelming additional amount of money. And one thing that's good about that option is the way that it would play into the natural sleep rhythms of the students. So if the paramount issue is addressing the health and wellness issues for our students, that, you know, and putting the cost not completely to one side, but just sort of weighing it, that that might be something to consider, even though our mandate to the committee at the beginning was to, that we would not be thinking of something that was not cost-neutral. I would at least like to advocate for continuing to consider that option.
And I think, just for clarity's sake, on the flip-flop option, you're right, you know, $20,000, $29,000 in the large scheme of things doesn't seem like a lot. I think the greater hurdle for that option was the fact that the middle school, high school kids wouldn't start until 8:30 or so, which then runs into trouble getting them to athletic events and things after school.
Understood.
So that's, you know, we'd have to do a lot of massaging schedules to be able, because it's also unacceptable that kids miss their ninth period class to make it to a soccer game.
Understood, understood.
So I just want to add...
Oh, no, you go ahead.
I want to add, you know, I really appreciate the, you know, the detailed presentation and, you know, all the work that you've put into the, you know, all the research and, you know, tallying the survey results and all those things, but I still, in the back of my mind, I feel like there's, there's a segment of the community that we're not reaching. And, you know, we had a large number of people here tonight, and many had comments, but I feel that there's people out there that, either they're not making a comment, or they're not, and I know you've made an incredible effort to inform people. I don't know how people could not be informed, but I just feel like we're not reaching everyone, and I, it's a concern I have, that I want to be sure that if we're going to make a decision to make a change, that it's not going to cause hardships on people that we haven't heard about, you know, from a large number of people that, you know, may have issues, so...
Just for clarity, are you saying that you think we still have, there are still people out there that don't know that we're studying this, or that we're, they're just not responding?
I don't know that it's so much that they don't know, but we're not hearing from them for whatever reason, and, you know, whether it be at a public meeting like this, or whether it be, you know, email, or, you know, letter, or however it may be, I really like to hear from people who may have one issue or another, or positive or negative.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're reaching them, and they're just not reaching back for whatever reason. So I mean, I would agree that we're certainly not hearing from everybody, but, you know, if they care, they have to contact us in some way, whether it's the survey, call us, email us, come to a meeting. I mean, there's any number of ways for them to get back to us, so we, you know. If you have any suggestions on any other way, we can reach out.
Yeah, I don't know what the answer is. I just, I just have this feeling in the back of my head that this...
Yeah, I mean, sure.
And there were a few comments this evening, which I was very appreciative of, about, you know, the unique circumstances that all of our families face. I think we heard about that even with concerns around the bus, you know, the buses earlier in the fall, and I think it's really important that we're cognizant of those differences amongst our families, and that we do reach out, as you say, Mark, as much as possible. And that's why I do think it's important, following on this conversation, that we do another survey. We're just going to be surveying people in our community, you know, until people will be very tired of surveys. But I think it's important, because there's a kind of recursive dynamic where maybe people hadn't really decided what they thought, or they didn't answer, but then they've heard about this conversation that took place tonight, or they see the video, or whatever, and then they may have views they want to express. So I think it's important that we go back to our parent community and offer them yet another opportunity to give us the feedback that you're feeling we haven't entirely collected yet.
One thing that might possibly address some of your concern, Mark, is that we had two members of the press here this evening. So, you know, I think it's pretty clear that there'll be more information out there for people to receive, and, you know, I think it's pretty common after an article or, you know, news segment, that you get a bump in, in comments and, and people wanting to express their views. Maybe not a perfect solution, but might get some more responses.
Yeah, and I think now that the information is out there, and it'll be on the website, and people can actually look at it and think about it, you know, they can come to any of our meetings and make public comment on this. It doesn't have to be another special meeting, so they can, you know, come anytime.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, all that being said, and I agree with you, a 51.5 percent response rate from parents is tremendous, honestly. And I believe that you also said on the survey, or at least the announcement of the survey, that people could contact you as a committee directly. So I do appreciate all the outreach you've done. I was just wondering if you were, if people identified as BMS, RHS, or CLS parents, if there's any way to break down that parent response according to schools, or whether, you know, I don't know, there might be many that are not...
Yeah, we did, we did break it out.
Yeah.
I think we, didn't we break it out?
We did. Well, you know, we gave parents the opportunity to respond based on, you know, how many kids do you have and in which schools.
Oh, yeah.
And we've got about a 50 percent response rate in K through 11. The 12th grade parents didn't respond quite as vigorously. But the good news is that the teacher who teaches statistics in the high school has actually asked if they could use the data from our surveys and do some research and breakdown of numbers. So we're really thrilled that they're willing to do that, and we can give them all the data, and they can parse it in all kinds of ways.
I would just, I'm curious about, the teachers, the Chancellor, I completely respect their concerns about moving Chancellor's end time to later in the day. Totally understand that. Curious if that's reflected in the parent surveys also. Would Chancellor parents, the numbers look different than the BMS or RHS parents or not?
I think those negative comments generally were based on, you know, my kid can't stay in school any later, you know.
No, I understand. I just wondered if the numbers are available to, for parents to break them out by school.
We could tag a person with a...
Yeah, I'm not sure, because you could have been responding in one, in one way, for one kid in each building, you know.
Right, sure, okay, yeah. So it's tricky.
It is a little tricky.
Well, if you were able, if those students looking at it were able to just pull out the, anyone who identified as a CLS parent, and then anyone who identifies, you know, I mean, your numbers will total more than 100 percent, but that's because there'll be kids in different schools.
Well, one of the things you couldn't do is, you can just survey the Chancellor's parents and just the BMS parents and the RHS parents, and some of them, if you have a kid in each building, well, you're going to have three, three separate responses, and it might be different with each school, you know, with that parent thinking about it. And saying, no, you know, you're right, you know. It's great for the high school kids, but, nah, you know, my elementary kid, I don't want him staying any later than he currently is. You could get a different response, and it's something we could think about crafting other surveys.
Right, right. I would, on that note, point, I'd like to point out that, you know, the committee came up with the questions, but Tom's been running all the surveys, and I'd really like to thank him for collecting all the data and running all the Survey Monkey things, so.
The head monkey.
The head monkey, exactly. Bananas later.
See no evil, hear no evil, say no evil.
You wish.
All right, is there anything else on school start time? All right, so we'll move on to NISBO professional development report.
Yeah, so at 10 of 9, I don't think anyone spends a lot of time with this, and I won't be so presumptuous as to think that I could really represent fully a couple of the sessions I went to at the New York State School Board Association Conference, but I did want to provide you with a couple of links to information on the ones that I did attend. Two of them in particular I attended that were run by the same gentleman, Ronald Ferguson. He's a, an economist at the Harvard Kennedy School. And the one on influence of teaching on student agency was a seminar that he did, and the PDF file, which is accessible on Harvard's website, that is a paper that he actually, they published on their website and put up the week after the seminar, really thoroughly looks at it. But what he has done is do surveys of students, K-12, around the country, tens of thousands of them. And what he and his teams have concluded is that, that there's a way to measure through surveys, students' sense of agency, which is that they're, you know... sense of agency, which is that they're, you know, he's defined here as like the capacity and propensity to take purposeful initiative, or another way he says is that we want our kids to grow to be voluntary lifelong learners, and so he measures, he, what he does is survey students on the teaching that goes on in classrooms, and he finds that it's very compelling to the answers that students give you that can reflect a growing sense of their own agency, and learning is a good measure for a proxy to sort of look at student success overall. He's very clear that he stays out of the business of teacher evaluation, although in one of the articles I referenced here, he does, he does support using multiple measures, you can tell he's not a guy who's all about standardized tests at all, but that student surveys that he uses, and he does have a company that's separate from the Harvard Kennedy Schools that also helps to administer student surveys, is that they're used for professional development, so student, teachers can get feedback on what students are thinking about their classrooms and learn from them, so he provides that sort of service, and just the things that he focuses on in the questions, and again, it's not just him, it's a whole team of research, he's worked for, for a long time, are what he called the seven Cs of teaching, which is care, confer, captivate, consolidate, clarify, challenge, and classroom management, and, and he has a very nuanced and sophisticated understanding of what kind of questions to use in a survey, and how to analyze them, and how to use them to improve teaching, so I really would encourage you at some point to look at his paper on this, but if you Google him, and maybe you have, there's a lot he's done on this question of student agency, and I think it might be useful for us to think about at the curriculum committee, or share with our administrators, because it's a really, I think Diane and I both felt, because Diane was there, was that it was an exciting way to look at, how do we improve teaching that doesn't go down this road of high-stakes testing and punishment, but rather, how do we also communicate with our students about teaching, which is something we don't really do enough? So, and then just quickly, the other one that he did was on the hidden role of youth culture in classrooms, I think that the handouts from the conference were really excellent about that, because he's doing something that I think probably a lot of us here would agree with, but I think what he really wants to frame is that discipline needs to be really purposeful, and what are your goals of discipline, because a lot of the evidence from his student surveys suggests the importance of youth culture on how students behave in class, and comes to some conclusions that may sound, that kind of makes sense, and I think some of us would agree with, but is not always clear in our, in discipline practices in schools more generally, I wouldn't say necessarily in ours, but students know when they're doing things that are wrong, and often, if asked, they don't really want to be, and they might, but there's a whole way that youth culture supports doing things like being disruptive in a classroom, and he talks about ways to sort of use, kind of help students collude together to create a culture that's different, and that supports learning, and, and being yourself in a classroom, and, and a big piece of it that he talks about, and Deirdre was at this one with me, is that kids who don't do their work are often hiding it, is his conclusion, that it's better to look, let's, how does he put it, he, you know, you don't want to look stupid, so you might pretend more that you're being disruptive, because you don't really get it, what's being taught, so it's better to look lazy than stupid, is what he says, so for a lot of kids who aren't doing well in school, and may look like they don't care, his research suggests that they're sort of concealing, that they don't really get what's going on in a classroom, so again, he has really nuanced, really very sophisticated look at, at understanding youth culture and teaching through student surveys, and I think it could be useful to us, so I just encourage people to look at it.
Diane.
Deuter, thank you so much for doing this.
Absolutely.
In the two years of the conferences that I've gone to for the school board, this was by far the most interesting, the first one that I went to, and exciting one to be at, and I would hope our curriculum committee, I hope everybody would take a look at the information, you know, sometimes we are afraid to hear what our students have to say, and I think, especially just recently, looking at the surveys from the school start time that our students filled out, and the survey that the ninth grade students filled out, and they have a lot to say, and they take the time, and they take it seriously, and it can really improve our schools, and I, you know, I would definitely urge everyone to take a look at this, and, you know, to see if we can find a way to incorporate this to, to our schools.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we'll move on to the, the next one, which is advocacy 101, which was actually redone at the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting last Thursday, Joe and I attended, so you have the slides from the presentation, do you already want to say anything about that, or, because I could go on to-
Well, I, you know, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty well done, I think in some ways it would have been a good primer for board members who haven't done much in terms of advocacy, and I, I sat there, and, you know, I wouldn't say I was bored, but I'd heard, I heard a lot of it before, because I've been around the block a couple of times with this stuff, so I don't, don't say that in a negative way, I thought it was, I thought it was good, actually, but one of the things that came up that I wanted to bring to your attention, as a result of going to this workshop down at Dutchess County School Board Association, as well as, unfortunately, a conversation that, that I had as part of the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendent's Group, which I went to the next day, so they kind of, they kind of meshed nicely, and one of the things they talked about Thursday night was, was the timing of your advocacy, and specifically, they were talking about the upcoming State of the State and budget, you know, the governor's budget-
Address.
...proposal, address, whatever, and I'm sure most, if not all, of you have heard that he has decided to combine these into one, into one address being given on January 13th, and there was some talk about advocacy before that, that State of the, State of the State slash budget address, the other, the thing that I'm connecting the dots here, or trying to, is at my meeting Friday, after being somewhat slightly buoyed, but always with a, with a healthy dose of skepticism about Senator Serino's recent proclamation that gap elimination adjustment, we're going to, we're going to fix this, I heard from my Westchester and Putnam County, and Rockland County colleagues on Friday morning, that they were privy to some information, albeit third-hand, that the governor and, and our new Assembly Speaker, Assemblyman Hasty, had made public comments saying that they weren't going to touch GEA, and instead would put any money that they might put forward into foundation aid and not gap elimination adjustment. So that's a concern to me, some of the districts in Westchester, Putnam, Dutchess, and Rockland Counties were talking about, for some of them, they would benefit more from money in foundation aid rather than gap elimination adjustment, other school districts otherwise, and the, I think coming out of that meeting, the consensus was that we need to be lobbying for full restoration of gap elimination adjustment aid, as well as an increase, as well as an increase in foundation aid, especially within the context of a tax levy limit that's going to be brutally low this year, and, and again, combined with the discussion the night before at the Dutchess County School Boards Association, the, the wisdom around the table was that this is something that, in a, in a perfect world, ought to be done before the holidays, so that if it's going to have any kind of impact or influence, that the governor ought to be hearing before he puts a budget out there, that this is what needs to be done. Now, again, one district doing it may fall on deaf ears, but I don't think we, we can take the opinion that just because we're the ones banging the drum, that we shouldn't do it, so I'm, I'm leaving this group, perhaps another letter, we did such a good job last time on the Common Core letter, that we may want to give some consideration to crafting a shorter letter specifically addressing the need for GEA and foundation aid increases in the context of the tax levy limit projection, and fire that sucker off to-
Yes.
...the governor, as well as to our own legislators, to say, hey, guys, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't badmouth, or, and could very well be, the Senate is talking about restoring gap elimination aid, but if they don't have the Assembly and the governor working with them, then they'll be, they'll be spitting in the wind, so.
It's also divide and conquer, you know, it's, we'll, we'll address one constituency, and so there won't be enough, enough opposition on the part of people who don't like it to , to matter, and it's disgusting that we have to be put in that position, where, you know, we're, we're sort of fighting with each other about what, you know, how to divide up the, the money that they're so graciously offering to give us.
Well, I'm glad you made that point, too, because the other concept that came out of that discussion with my colleagues down, and down the deep south, is that we should not only be lobbying for full restoration of GEA and increase in foundation aid, but also, at the same time, for equitable funding, because there are other school districts, including some in this county, who, quite frankly, need more than, than we need to sustain themselves, so those are three themes that came out of that discussion, which I wanted to bring back to you, I think they all three make a lot of sense, and we ought to give some consideration to some, some lobbying, if only through a well-crafted brief letter, to let our legislators and our governor know how we feel about that.
So if we were going to do such a letter, what would your proposal be for timing, for authorship, for comments?
Well, timing-wise, my, my sense is that doing something before the holidays would be best, would it be a waste to do it right after the holidays, I'm not so sure, but voices of experience around the table were saying, yeah, do it, do it before everybody gets into the, the holiday mindset, and-
But more specifically, I mean, we have a meeting coming up on the 18th, right?
I would say that that would be about the last we'd want to do it.
Yeah, our, our meeting is the 22nd.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pushing it, but, you know, it's-
The communication's-
Yeah, we're meeting Friday, right?
Well, maybe we could discuss it there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, just throwing it out there as a result of this, and this other meeting.
But the governor makes his budget proposal, and then it gets, you know, that it's-
Yeah, right.
...the whole game, with the Assembly and the Senate about that, so, you know, I think, and I don't, so I think, I think your idea is great to send a letter, but I think meeting with our legislators right after the governor's talk would be important, too. Some years, I think we've waited a while before trying to make appointments, and then I think having, well, I guess Cahill eventually did meet with some of us last year-
Yeah.
-but I know it can be difficult to get those meetings, so I wonder if we shouldn't try to schedule them-
Yeah.
...or after the governor's budget address, but schedule them, you know, try to make that happen now, so we have dates already in place.
In fact, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, these two folks from NISBA were, were suggesting, you know, out of the context of the specific issues here about gap elimination adjustment, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, it's, it's not a bad idea to get their ear, and this year perhaps, especially, to get their ear earlier in the process, they were understandably also pushing the benefits of going up there en masse with, to Lobby Day, which typically doesn't happen until a little later in the process, and we may want to give some thought to setting up meetings with our own legislators in the second half of January, which would be after the governor's budget, and then for some of us, perhaps, to go up to Albany with a group of Dutchess County people, and lobby twice this year, especially given that it's going to be a tough year, and after all, it is our, it is your, one of your goals for the school district, that it might be, we haven't gone in a long time, might be a year to give it a try again, and try to rally a few of us who want to take the day to drive up there, and bang on some doors, and give them the same message twice. So I can and will, if, if you're willing, have my secretary start calling our three legislators' offices, to see if we can get them to see him after the State of the State slash budget address. If you're interested in that.
Yes, sounds great.
Okay.
And I just want to also add that the, you know, another issue we raised in our letter to the Common Core Task Force was about teacher evaluation, and that is, you know, that is legislation, and, you know, when we wrote that letter, I was surprised within the next day or so, so it must have been that someone was listening to our, our conversation at the governor's office, because then suddenly they're talking about decoupling, perhaps.
Thank you.
So, we really are on the vanguard, but honestly, I really do, I don't, you know, I don't think anyone knows what's going to happen there, but I think that message is really important to talk to our legislators about, I think NISBA's position on this is very tepid, and it might just be because the membership is not unified, but, you know, we had our position, and I think that that's another thing, not just financials, that we want to communicate.
Absolutely.
Yes, and just so everybody knows, I did send a copy, a hard copy of our Common Core letter to each or three legislators, so they, they got it right away, they got it the day after the board meeting, so.
Great.
But I agree that, that ought to make up our lobbying platform with them in late January, and we'll probably know a little bit more by then, because supposedly, this Common Core Task Force is supposed to make a recommendation within the next couple of weeks, which would put it before the, the holiday break as well, so we would have some information to go in there with, for better or for worse.
Okay.
Diane.
I don't remember who said it to us, but, you know, our advocacy is important, but it's also important for our parents and our community members to speak up, and I'm wondering if maybe we should reach out to our parent groups, I mean, I, you know, a petition or something might be helpful from our parents, if they'd be willing to sign something that we could also send that would, you know, speak to them as their voters, and maybe, Joe, if you just, we talked about gap elimination and foundation aid, but maybe just for public, if you just want to spell it out a little bit for them, what that means, for anyone that's at home, maybe thinking of writing, or calling their legislators.
You mean here, right, Pam?
Yeah, just, just generally what, you know, you know, what those things mean to-
Yeah.
Sure, well, yeah, I'll, I'll try to-
We've talked about it many times, but-
Yeah, I'll try to give the 20-second on that, and, which is not to say that if we craft a letter to send to our legislators, there's certainly no reason we can't use the, the digital bully pulpit and, and send that out to all of our parents, we got a lot of great feed, positive feedback from parents after we sent that Common Core letter out to them, from parents and from staff members.
I heard some comments.
I, I keep hearing from staff members, thanks for doing that, you guys are really taking a leadership role here, and we appreciate it, so, I mean, I heard that at a negotiations meeting just earlier this week, so, so it's, it's been noticed and appreciated, there's no reason we can't do that with this, but essentially, gap elimination aid is a, is a sum of money that's in our state aid run, that, starting back in the days of former Governor Patterson, when fiscal situation was, was more dire, that gap elimination was, you know, skim, X- was, was more dire, that gap elimination was, you know, skim X amount of dollars out of the state aid runs in order to help the state balance its budget. And I think we found out a year or two, a couple of years ago, that the emperor truly had no clothes when our governor announced that the state had a $2 billion surplus, but we were still getting gap elimination aid money taken out of our state aid allotment. This is money that's, had been promised to us. And over the last six or seven years, we've lost over $3 million in gap elimination aid money. Just so everybody knows the gravity of that. It's, it's down to about $250,000, give or take, that is still being, or was taken out of our state aid run last year. And our foundation aid went up, what, $8,000?
Something like that, yeah.
So you can see how much foundation aid increase we're getting, and how much gap elimination aid is still being withheld by, by the state. And there's, there's a third of what we're looking at as a potential gap, given the tax levy limit this year. So that's, that's the, that's the short story. Foundation aid is general operating aid. Gap elimination aid is money we'd already been given, but has been carved out of our state aid allotment. So it's not insignificant. And we'll have to talk Friday about crafting some kind of a letter to address that.
So I'll just add, you know, in this meeting, I'll just point you to page 11 on the, on the handouts, but they're, they're very specific about you should build relationships with your legislators, not just, you know, go to meet with them to, you know, make demands or whatever, but invite them into the schools, see what's going on in the schools, you know, send them newsletters, whatever, you know, whatever the school puts out, you know, public information, kind of information. You know, because if they come to your school and they meet with people from your school, you know, when you ask them for something, you know, in a meeting later on, they're going to remember that they have a relationship with your school, and they'll be more willing to kind of go to bat for you.
Yeah.
They also say, you know, we should, when you go into your meeting, be prepared, know the facts, you know, have something to ask for, you know, not just kind of rehash the, you know, like the NISBA platform on, you know, whatever the, the subject of the day may be, but, you know, and then to follow up and follow through with, you know, whatever you've asked for. So I thought those were important points. And they also said, you know, you should meet with them earlier rather than later, because by the time the, you know, the budget decisions have been made, it's kind of late to be meeting with your legislators, so. So anyone else, I saw a handout.
Yeah, just a quick request. I don't know whether you have it. This, there is really great information in this, but the copy is kind of sketchy. Do you have a link to this presentation?
This is what they, they gave us hard copy there.
They gave you a hard copy.
I can reach out to Lori Rich to see if she can get us, in fact, they were going to send this one, and I haven't gotten it yet. So I think it's, I think it's coming.
Okay, great. Thank you. Was this, this was at the convention?
No, but they gave this same presentation at the convention, but they repeated it.
Right. Because I'll just say, on, on the NISBA website, any.
Yes, that's probably in there.
PDFs from every workshop.
Yeah, good point.
Insert.
Yep.
So that would be.
That's a good, that's a good point. They said they had updated this some since, since the convention, but probably not, they didn't rewrite it, I'm sure.
Right. I heard the session at the convention, it looks.
Oh, you did? Okay, good, good.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same.
All right. Anything else on that? So, we got the good news.
I was really, some, the basketball season started. Girls' varsity, I think, has had a couple of wins. And I went to the boys' game last night, and there were a lot of kids there. It was really great, like a big crowd, so that was really nice.
I would just report that Marvin Krebs and I were, were invited to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation's thank you get-together for their donors. And we talked a little bit about, I talked a little bit about our, what we'd accomplished with the support of the Science Foundation over the last 10 years, as well as tried to put a not-heavy-handed plug in for the fact that this year is going to be a very difficult budget year with the tax levy cap, just so those folks were aware. And then Marvin Krebs gave a very extensive review of what we've done, especially lately, focusing on STEM lab and technology. So it was a pleasure to be able to represent the school district and to let the Science Foundation donors know what we're doing with their money, so.
Great.
Deirdre?
Two things. One is that the new parent-teacher conference format in the high school was really great last week, where the second day of conferences, the teachers held just open office hours for parents to drop by without having to make formal appointments. Saw a lot of parents kind of happily moving about the hallways and dropping in, and the teachers seemed also to think it was a nice informal way to chat just briefly with parents. And it struck me as being consonant with one of our goals from last year, which was around communication between parents and teachers, and the willingness of the school to pilot this new format, the teachers to try something new, seemed really, really positive. So just wanted anecdotally to report that that seemed to be a great innovation. And also, I wanted to say, another piece of good news, the National Honor Society inductees were all honored last week. And what a huge class of honorable students! I don't know how else to put it there. There were many, many students up on that stage, so it was quite inspiring.
There were 19 new ones.
Yeah, to see all those students.
Great, excellent.
All right, that good news? All right, old business? Old business. All right, move on to public comment. We have an opportunity for public comment.
Our one member of the public.
Please. All right, seeing none. Move on to other.
I've got just a quick other. Joe, thank you for the FYI information in the back of our packets. I wanted to specifically thank you for this article, Rigor Redefined. It's, it's a really interesting read, and I would love for the curriculum committee to take this up, as well as CDEP, as just sort of part of our conversations about how we're engaging our students and giving them agency, and, and getting them to think more broadly about their, their time here.
Well, when I saw that, it rang my CDEP bell.
Good, excellent. We're on the same page.
No, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, all right, that would be great. Well, Mark and Lisa and I were at this meeting with Commissioner. How do you think?
Iliet.
Dela, I think that.
Iliet is.
I know Joe was there earlier, so she had these all-day meetings with various constituencies. And I will say, I give her credit for really getting out into, this is the New York State Commissioner of Education, to get out there. She said she's done 17,000 miles in her five months as commissioner, so, and this was the most sort of, there were, what, maybe like 100 school board members? The most intimate kind of gathering with a commissioner in all my years on school boards. And she also, I have to say, just as an attitude, I mean, there was no condensation, what, she wasn't condescending at all. She was very much just, here's what I'm doing, here's what I'm thinking, there's a lot to learn, I realize a lot of stress in New York, there's a lot going on. Talked about standards, talked about curriculum, talked about testing, talked a little bit about teacher evaluation. And, you know, without going into a whole lot of details at this moment, you know, we, there was a little bit of time for question-answer that, unfortunately, you know, I don't think was that productive. We didn't really get a big dynamic back and forth. But it seemed like she's making effort to sort of hear what teachers, school board members, administrators, parents have to say, whether, she's also rubbing up against a big political machine that we don't know about, and political power in the governor's office. But I don't know if you guys, what you guys thought. But it's just sort of an introductory thing, you know, it's a start, a better start than I've seen.
I, I just, you know, on that subject, the one thing that impressed me most about her presentation was that she did not come across as handing down pronouncements from on high, the way her predecessor did. And whether the substance will be ultimately different remains to be seen, but the tone is certainly better.
Yes.
And I think tone means a lot.
All right, now, I'll just add, you know, this is the, I think, since I've been on the board, and this is my 10th year, I think this is the third education commissioner we've had in that time. And I, I feel like this is the one that gets it the most, you know, over the other two that I've, you know, had experience with. So I have a good feeling about that, but we'll have to see what happens. All right, anything else? Any other other? It's hard to see.
I know.
Okay, so I guess we'll move on to our action items. There's only one item in the consent agenda. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion, opposed and favors? It's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept a grant award from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation in support of the implementation of the STEM Fair Grant, as submitted by Ms. Allison Vacarino, in the amount of $1,765, as stipulated.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion. Lisa?
Thank you, once again, to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. One of, getting to be a very, very long list of fabulous things that the foundation has done for this.
Okay, opposed and favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Discussion, opposed and favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve additional non-unit salaries confidential for 2015-16.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? Opposed and favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the discussion of negotiations with our administrators' bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
By Lisa. Opposed and favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We're moving into executive session.